The Finance Committee went a little past their ordinary period of time, so we're starting our County Board meeting a tad later, which is fine. So I'm calling the meeting of December 8th, 2020 to order. And may I ask, Member DeCiani, would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And please remain standing. I will introduce our invocator. I'd like to introduce Pastor Rhett Austin from the Faith Community Church in West Chicago to lead us in invocation via Zoom. Pastor?
Please join me in prayer. Lord, we come before you now, recognizing our dependence upon you for all things. You are the Creator and the Redeemer, the first and the last, the beginning and the end. All things were created by you and for you. You are the God of mercy, grace, love, and wisdom. Thank you for the service of each member of this Board. We ask that this meeting would be fruitful and productive as they seek to make the best decisions for this county. We ask in particular that you would give them continued perseverance and strength as they navigate the great challenges brought on by the coronavirus. Protect the members of the Board, protect their families. Please keep them in good health. Bless the people of our county, protect them, and, Lord, please encourage those who have lost loved ones due to the virus. We commit this meeting to you and pray that you would give wisdom to all those who are members of the DuPage County Board. I pray for a spirit of peace as they make administrative and financial decisions for this county. Give them the wisdom to make decisions that cause our local communities to flourish. I pray this, the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Okay. Pursuant to the Governor's executive order, I will entertain a motion to permit the members of the Board attending by telephone to participate and vote in the meeting. It's been a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose nay, and all those present, would you show your hand, physical manifestation? Okay, all right. There you go. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ekoff. Garcia.
Here. Or aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye. Here.
Pachowski.
Aye.
Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
And Desart.
Aye.
Okay, great. That motion to allow us to have Board members participate via electronic means is adopted. Now we go to a roll call. We get to do it again. So, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chaplin.
Here.
Chavez.
Here.
Covert.
Ah, here.
Desart.
Here.
DeCiani. Ekoff. Garcia.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Krajewski.
Here.
LaPlante.
Here.
Ozog.
Here.
Pachowski.
Here.
Renahan.
Here.
Rutledge.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Selman.
Here.
Tornatori.
Here.
And Zay.
Okay, great. We have a forum, a quorum and a forum, and we've got everybody present, and I'm delighted that we have so many new names and faces and people participating. Welcome all. On the Order of Chairman's Report, we have several presentations here this morning. First and foremost, I'd like to invite Judge Popejoy, our new Chief Judge, to take his place up at the podium, a reasonable distance from our deputy clerk. And today, we are joined by 18th Judicial Circuit New Chief Judge, the Honorable Ken Popejoy. His term as Chief Judge began just yesterday. Judge Popejoy is a graduate of Kent College of Law, Michigan State University, and the Glenbard West Hilltoppers High School. What you may not know about Judge Popejoy is that he was a world-class runner in the one-mile-distance event. In fact, he was the indoor NCAA champion in 1972. He competed in the Olympic Trials. He's been inducted into the Chicagoland Sports Hall of Fame. Judge Popejoy, welcome and thanks for being here today. Just wondering, what was your best? What was your PR for a mile?
357 in college, 355 when I was in law school.
Wow, that's awesome. Awesome. Well, thank you for joining us, Judge Popejoy, and please take it away.
Thank you very much, and good morning, all. It's an honor to speak with all of you at your inaugural 2021 County Board meeting. I asked Chairman Crone if I could come over to introduce myself to each and every one of you so that you can put a name, a face, and a voice to the office of Chief Judge of the 18th Judicial Circuit. My name is Ken Popejoy, and I have the privilege of being the 20th Chief Judge in the 63-year history of the 18th Judicial Circuit. I also have the unique perspective of having met, conversed, and known each and every one of my 19 predecessors, going back to second grade in 1958, when my father brought me over to the courthouse, introduced me to Mel Abrahamson, the first Chief Judge, and I did a report on the court system in DuPage County for my second-grade class. First of all, to these six newly-elected Board members, please accept my congratulations on your hard-fought victories. Second of all, to each and every one of the 18 Board members, I would like to extend my thanks and gratitude for accepting the responsibility of being a part of the legislative branch of DuPage County Government. You know, elections, whether they are for County Board, County offices, and even the judiciary, involve partisan designations and alignments, red or blue. But once the election results are finalized, as evidenced by this past cycle, purple becomes the dominant color. Regardless of political alignment, the 18 of you are first and foremost DuPage County residents, who have the honor and privilege of being elected by DuPage County residents. Tomorrow, I will have been a resident for my entire 70 years. I'm the son of a DuPage County attorney, and for the last 47 years, I've been a law student, an attorney, and a judge. In this state, judges are elected in the political process also. But upon our election, the only color that results is black, as evidenced by our robes. Our job as judges is not to legislate or set policy. Instead, our role is to interpret the law using case law precedent, which is the guide and the basis for all of our rulings, not our personal or our political beliefs. My goal as Chief Judge is to have an open, transparent, and constructive dialogue with each and every one of you. I want you all to understand the inner workings of the judiciary as we have 48 judges who are all employees of the state of Illinois. Yet, we are all supported, both procedurally, financially, by the backbone of you, our County Board. Although separate branches of government, we are truly one, as each of our goals is to make and keep DuPage County the premier place to live and work within the state of Illinois. I am a product of this county, and I take the greatest pride and pleasure of having the county in my blood, sweat, and tears. I truly look forward to working with all of you. My phone gets answered, and my door is always open. Together, we can have a fulfilling, productive, and fruitful relationship that gives all of our constituents what they elected us for: a responsive, efficient, and caring county government. Thank you so much for your time and attention, and I will look forward to seeing each and every one of you again very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. We have another distinguished guest here this morning. Our State's Attorney, Bob Berlin, joins us. I've asked Bob to provide an overview of our Open Meetings Act obligations as elected officials. This information seemed timely as we are welcoming new members to our Board, and also with the challenges in this pandemic, getting together, Zoom, all these different considerations, I just thought it'd be a good idea to have Bob come by and kind of give us a quick review. Bob, welcome, and please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's an honor to be here, and I want to say welcome to all of our new County Board members. I look forward to getting to know you and to working with you as we continue to move DuPage County forward. I want to spend a little bit of time this morning, not too much time, talking just generally about the Open Meetings Act, and also to let everyone know that we will be planning a more detailed ethics seminar as we have done in the past, to be scheduled, and at this point, unsure if we'll be able to do that in person or via Zoom. So, if we can go ahead and start, we have a little PowerPoint here, and we'll start, if you move to the first slide. It's just an overview of the Open Meetings Act. And let me start by saying, what's the purpose? The purpose of the Act is to let the public know what we are doing in government. The public has a right to have advanced notice of, and the right to attend all meetings at which any business of a public body is discussed or acted upon. There are certain exceptions where the public body is allowed to go into closed or executive session. I'll talk briefly about that in a few minutes. But the Open Meetings Act, the intent of that Act is that public bodies take action or vote in open meetings, and that public bodies deliberate openly. So, what is a meeting? The Open Meeting Act actually defines a meeting as a gathering, any gathering, whether it's in-person or by video or by audio conference, but it can also be by telephone, electronic means such as email. It can be texting, electronic chat, or instant messaging. All of those can constitute a meeting under the definition of the Open Meetings Act. And it has to be a majority of a quorum of the members of the public body where it qualifies as an actual meeting. And I'll talk about that in a second, but for purposes of a five-member public body, the quorum is actually the majority of the quorum. And there's a requirement, obviously, for it to be an official meeting, that there is a discussion of public business. So now, what constitutes a majority of a quorum? A quorum, obviously, is a majority of the public body. So, in the case of this County Board, there's 18 members. A quorum is 10. A majority of the quorum, in that case, would be 6. And I've listed a number of examples here. Again, if you have a 12-member Board or Committee, 7 would be the quorum, and then 4 is the majority of the quorum. So that majority of the quorum is the number, that magic number that is necessary to actually qualify, potentially qualify, for an actual meeting. So if we move to the next slide, there's three requirements for an open meeting. So number one, you need the gathering, and it can be in-person, again, or it can be electronic. Number two, you need a majority of a quorum to be present. And third, there has to be some discussion of public business. Now, all the Board members should be aware that it's possible for a purely social gathering to then turn into a open meeting or a meeting in violation of the Open Meetings Act if a social gathering, all of a sudden, everyone starts talking about public business. So the purpose may have been something completely different, but if everyone starts discussing public business, it can become an open meeting. When we talk about what is the discussion of public business, what does that mean? What it means is the exchanging of views on any matters that are germane to the business of the public body. So it is a very broad definition under the statute as to what public business means. In order to have a proper legal open meeting, you need agendas. Agendas have to be posted 48 hours in advance. A public body with a website, such as DuPage County, must post the agenda on its website, and that agenda has to remain posted until the regular meeting is concluded. The agenda requirement does not preclude the consideration of items that are not specifically set forth in the agenda. However, if they're not specifically set forth in the agenda, the public body cannot vote on a matter that's not on the So, we also have executive session or a closed meeting. The Open Meeting Act does permit the Board to go into closed session, but only for very specific reasons. Some of these include employment matters, which can include collective bargaining, and one of the other common purposes for going into executive session is to discuss litigation, whether there's an actual pending case or when an action is probable or imminent. In order for that to happen, again, it has to be on the agenda, that there will be executive session, and the body actually has to vote to go into executive session and then come out of executive session. Any action that's taken has to be taken, though, in open session. So all votes have to occur in open session. So, there are a number of amendments and changes to the Open Meetings Act in light of COVID-19 that became effective June 12th of this year, when the General Assembly was in session. The General Assembly did do away with the requirement that in order for the public body members to attend a meeting by means other than physical presence, that a quorum of the members would have to be physically present, and, secondly, that the public body would have to adopt rules governing remote attendance. Public Act 101-640, which did go into effect this past June, now allows public bodies to hold an open or closed meeting by audio or video conference without the physical presence of a quorum of the members during a public health disaster, as long as several enumerated conditions are met. Those conditions, first of all, the Governor or Director of the Department of Public Health must issue a disaster declaration, which we are under right now. The head of the public body has to determine that an in-person meeting is not prudent nor practical because of the disaster, and all members of the public body who are participating in the meeting, regardless of their physical location, have to be verified. They have to be able to hear one another or able to hear, I'm sorry, and able to hear discussion and testimony. All votes have to be conducted by a roll call, and each member's vote on each issue shall be identified and recorded. And then, the public body must make alternative arrangements and provide notice of access to contemporaneously hear all discussion, testimony, and roll call votes, which DuPage County does via our website and YouTube page. Finally, at least one member of the public body or chief legal counsel or chief administrative officer must be physically present at the regular meeting location unless physical presence is unfeasible due to the disaster. If we move on. The consequences of failing to comply with the Open Meetings Act, they can be civil or criminal. Any person in the public or the State's Attorney can bring a civil action in civil court if there's probable cause to believe a violation of the Open Meeting Act has or will occur. The action has to be brought within 60 days of the violation, or if the violation is not discovered until sometime later, the State's Attorney then would have 60 days to bring an action upon discovery of that violation. The statute also created the Public Access Counselor, or also known as the PAC. This was actually created January 1st, 2010, under Public Act 96542. The Public Access Counselor is part of the Attorney General's Office, and the Public Access Counselor has the authority to resolve Open Meeting Act and FOIA violations. Most of the complaints dealing with open meetings will go to the Public Access Counselor. Typically, what happens is they'll reach out for information from the public body before they make a determination. The courts have the ability and the power to grant relief, including a mandamus, which is an actual order requiring a meeting be open to the public, granting an injunction or ordering a public body to release portions of minutes which are not authorized to be kept confidential. And then the court can also declare null and void any final action which is taken at a meeting in violation of the Open Meetings Act. Lastly, the statute does allow for a criminal penalty. A violation of any provisions other than the training requirements in the Open Meeting Act is a Class C misdemeanor. As your State's Attorney, we are here to give you legal advice and guidance, which we do. We take it very seriously, and we want you to reach out to us. Assistant State's Attorney Connor McCarthy, one of his assignments is the County Board. He's here for all the County Board meetings. We are all available, all the time, to answer questions about the Open Meetings Act or anything else, any other legal question that you may have. And again, at some point, hopefully soon, we will have a more detailed discussion of not only the Open Meetings Act, but FOIA and other ethical issues that may arise. So again, welcome to all the new Board members. Mr. Chairman, thank you for inviting me this morning.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. State's Attorney. I did want to add, if I may, that new Board members will be emailed a link this week to complete their state-mandated Open Meetings Act training. So if you have any questions, you can please, I encourage you, contact Cheryl Marquet, and we will get the event on the calendar where you go through all the ethics and ordinances and considerations. We'll get that to you very shortly. So, thank you, Bob. Thank you for coming out this morning. The next presentation we have is our annual PACE Budget Presentation. We are very pleased to welcome our representative on the PACE Board of Directors, former Elmhurst Mayor, Tom Markucci, and he's joined by Chris Rose, their community relations liaison. He joins us today for the Transit Services Annual Budget Presentation. Mr. Markucci, welcome, and the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I, believe it or not, really enjoy my trip out to this building annually to make sure that I have an opportunity to meet, to look in the face, and to introduce myself to the Board members. And congratulations to the four new Board members. And via this device you're able to see and meet me. I think it's important that we build as close a relationship as possible. And also, as the Chairman pointed out, Chris Rose is with me here today. She's always with me. She's at my elbow every day that I serve on the PACE Board. She is the community representative here in DuPage County. So if you should have an instance, well, you need to call me and say, hey, a constituent asked a question about a bus that was late, or a bus that is missing, or how come I can't get this service or that service? And I'm looking at Mr. DeCiani, who's done that more than once, and that's fine. I refer to Chris Rose. She's hands-on. She's the boots-on-the-ground that make it happen. I wish I could tell you I've been involved in bus service back to second grade, like Judge Popejoy said, but you should know that I have been involved, as the Chairman alluded to, in public service for over 30 years. And I really enjoy it. I enjoy working with folks and getting things done, and that's our job. At PACE, we deliver a critical service to the community. So, as you may know, in the past, I go over the numbers in the budget book very quickly, because they really don't tell the story of what's going on. And I like to give you the nitty-gritty, down-and-dirty kind of stuff. And I'm going to do that today as well, but someone, a friend of mine, pointed out after last year's presentation that, boy, Tom, we really enjoy you coming out and being with us, but I think 33 minutes is a little long for the PACE presentation. So I'm going to try to make it a little tighter this year than in the past.
It wasn't me, was it?
It was not you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
But I'm a friend of all of the Board members, so let's just leave it at that. So, the first thing to know about the PACE Budget, and I'm talking to the public as well through this medium, is that we really have three budgets. We have a suburban service budget, that's the buses you see on the street here in DuPage County. The paratransit budget is a completely different budget. PACE is responsible for delivering paratransit services, ADA rides, et cetera, throughout the entire Six County region, including, and this is different than the suburban system, inside the city of Chicago. So, that's our second budget. And our third budget is our capital budget. So I'll give you those numbers real briefly, and we can have a short discussion after that. The suburban budget this year is projected to be $239 million. It is balanced with projected revenues that we believe to be available. It proposes no fair increase. That's something we like to get out early in this presentation every year, no fair increase, even though next year's public funding for PACE is decreasing due to a projected decline in sales tax, and I'll get back to that in a minute. PACE achieves this balanced budget through administrative expenses reductions. We cut expenses to the bone everywhere we could as our readership, writership declined, but we have been able to achieve a balanced budget. And this is in no small part due to the passing of the Federal CARES Act, which then flowed money out to the states, and then that money flowed to us and helped us cover the shortfall. It should be noted that we, our level of government service, as well as you and every municipality, and the state of Illinois has been waiting to see what the federal government is going to do for a second round of CARES Act, and it looked pretty grim as recently as 10 days ago. But this morning, as I was having my coffee, there were across the board a lot of upbeat talk, and it looks like they're going to be able to get something done here by the end of the year. So we, at PACE, are very much looking forward to that, as I'm sure you are, too. The regional ADA budget, the second budget, is also balanced, and there will be no fair increase there as well. That's really, really important that we hold those costs, because the folks who use that service are amongst the least able to absorb a cost increase for that service. We are required by state law to charge for that service an amount equal to 10% of the cost of providing that service. And we do some very interesting accounting gymnastics to reduce the cost as much as we can. Some of those rides cost as much as $60 and $70, so that means to the recipient of the ride, their fee would be $7. Well, $7 might not seem like a lot of money to some people, but to our constituents, to the people that we provide the service with, that can get to be unattainable. So we do strive very hard to deliver that service as low a cost as possible. You should know, if you don't know, that we deliver that service not on PACE vehicles with PACE employees, but with contract, we sign contracts with different folks in different areas. I believe there's three inside the city of Chicago that provide the service, and we fund the central dispatching system, and that's how that system works. The third budget is the capital budget. That came in at $106 million. If you follow this over time, that's a pretty healthy number. That's a robust number for us. And then, again, is due not so much to the CARES Act, but to right here in the state of Illinois. The state in 2019 passed a Rebuild Illinois package that included a lot of capital funds for folks like PACE. We were able to buy more buses per year than we have in the past. That helps us reduce the age of the average bus on the street, makes for a more comfortable ride, a cleaner ride, a better ride, and folks enjoy that. And we're refurbishing, two of our garages are being rebuilt or built right now, and in a minute here, we're And in a minute here, I'm going to tell you about some bus natural gases. We're transitioning from diesel to natural gas buses, compressed, CNG. That sounds great. That is great. That's good. It's cleaner. The cost to run the bus today is less than with diesel, but the capital expenses are huge because you go to a bus station, you have to rip out the old gas system. But you can't even do that until you put in a new compressed natural gas system. So the demand for the land and the space can get to be quite onerous. Specifically, within the capital budget this year, we are buying 115 full-size compressed natural gas buses, 28 paratransit vehicles, eight community transit vehicles. That's the kind of thing you might see in your township or your village or your town might have a bus with its name on it. We help provide that vehicle. We are replacing the front-of-the-bus fare box system, which is quite an expense. As mentioned, we're doing two new garages. And we're also trying to upgrade the amount of shelters. That's one thing I hear here in DuPage County, is that as folks wait for their bus on what I call the high plains of DuPage County, it gets pretty cold out there. So we have numerous bus shelters. We try to add to that capacity every year. So those are the big numbers. Now, as I said, I usually try to give the backstory here. Here's the things that we really, I want you to know. These numbers, the 239, the 175, and the 106, these add up to $520 million. Over the years, PACE has been very good. I'm very proud of the staff that they develop reasonable, constrained budgets, and we hit those numbers every time within 3% or 4%. That's not the case this year, folks. We don't anticipate that. We don't know what's going to happen. The end-of-the-year budget this year looks nothing like the budget I presented at this podium a year ago because we didn't know COVID was coming. And now we don't know how fast COVID is going to go away. Yes, the vaccine is virtually at our door, but we don't know how widely it's going to be distributed, how quickly it's going to be distributed. And so there's that issue. So I just want to kind of, so if I'm back here in a year, and you said, Tom, you told us the budget was going to be this, but you did this, I'm kind of laying in my excuse beforehand that we just don't know what's going to happen. This is our best estimate. I don't want to call it a guess. We worked very hard to develop these numbers. They're real numbers, but we don't know what's going to happen. One thing that, within that kind of cloud of question marks, is sales tax income. This year, our sales tax income is down. Oh, well, COVID will go away, and then the sales tax is going to rebound. We don't know. No one knows. And quite frankly, I don't suspect that that's going to happen. The public, the general public, maybe even you in your home, has gotten used to shopping online. So those sales tax dollars, which some folks, well, I paid the sales tax. So I'm going to get the benefit of that, right? No. That goes into a big pot of money. That money gets distributed by formulas that we don't control out to the states. Some of the states are distributing that money in different ways. Sometimes it never reaches a municipality. Sometimes it reaches the county after a state. I'm not talking about Illinois here, just theoretically around the country. States take different amounts out of that bucket before they distribute it. So the idea of sales tax income, which used to be very predictable, very solid, as recently as five years ago, today is an unknown question mark. And going forward over time, and I'm sure you, as county board members, are aware of this and thinking of this, that portion of income to local governments has really got quite a cloud over it. So we'll just have to wait and see how that goes on, develops over time. So that was just a little, as I said, back-of-the-house thing that we discuss at PACE and worry about. It's what keeps me up at night. I did want to mention a little bit, because folks are concerned about this, and they ask us all the time, what are we doing to mitigate COVID-19 in our system and on our system? And we operate under three core principles at PACE all the time, which is that recognize that we provide a critical public need. It's not something we can just take away willy-nilly because, oh, we don't feel like running the bus today, or the bus driver got sick, so he didn't come in. We go through great lengths to make sure that there's always a backup for that bus, and a backup for the backup for that bus, and then a backup within a garage for that bus to make sure that every bus rolls every day because folks are depending about it. And as I just alluded to, they might be waiting out on a highway intersection to catch that bus. So it's got to be there. So it's a critical need. We operate safely. Not only, we used to just look at driver safety records, but now we look at COVID issues as well. And we communicate transparently. The PACE buses are clean every day, and they're cleaned during the day. Deep cleaning goes on at night, and then over the middle of the day sanitizing. The driver is wearing a mask. We ask our customers to wear a mask. We insist on it. And there's sanitizers on each bus. And then, as far as transparency of that goes, you can go to the PACE website. And I did it this morning, just to see how recently it had been updated. And it was updated within the last three days. When a employee of PACE comes down with COVID-19, we put that on our website. So that person might work in the administrative offices. It might be a mechanic in a garage, and he or she has called in sick with COVID symptoms, or it could even be a driver. That is updated on our website. I don't want to say every day, but within 48 hours, three days, at the outside so that folks know what's going on at PACE. And this gives them a level of security so that they know that we're taking their health and safety into mind. So, Mr. Chairman, that really concludes my discussion. I'm always open for questions if need be. Again, Tom Markucci, I'm at PACE. I'm here to help you. I work for you. I represent you. And Chris Nitti is here to deal with the day-to-day problems that your constituents might bring forward. And we look forward to working with you in the future. And I look forward to meeting the new members over the course of time here going forward.
Great. Thank you very much, Tom. Does anybody have any questions for Mayor Markucci? I see Member Chaplin.
It's not really a question. It's just a comment. And I say this every time Mayor Markucci does this PACE presentation. But I really enjoy your presentation, your enthusiasm, your, you know, you're just so passionate about PACE and the services they provide. And, you know, I enjoyed working with you guys when I was Public Transit Chair. And you do really have some nice services that you provide. And I just hope that we can, you know, with COVID and everything, you can continue to provide those, as you said, critical public services. So I just want to say thanks so much for coming out. I always enjoy your presentation.
Well, thank you very, very, very much. That's very kind of you. And I promise that we'll, Chris and I, will try to keep up the effort and keep up the pace going forward so that we can continue to serve your constituents, our collective constituents, and continue to make you happy. So that's our goal.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Take care. Thank you, Chris. Okay, so moving on, we have another presentation here. I'd like to invite Karen Ayala to get prepared to present. I think she's presenting remotely. We have all heard encouraging news from the state and federal governments that pending FDA approval, I believe Thursday, this Thursday, day after tomorrow, vaccines for COVID-19 could soon be on their way to counties for distribution to healthcare workers and first responders. In fact, they will be on the way here. I know that. This comes at a time we are seeing dramatic upswings in the number of cases in our region. DuPage County Health Department Executive Director Karen Ayala is here now with some details. Karen, thanks for joining us. Please proceed.
Thank you so much, Chairman. And thank you for the ongoing support of your office, the Board of Health President Sam Tornatori, and to the entire county board. For those I've not had the opportunity to meet yet, my name is Karen Ayala, and I have both the amazing and the awesome responsibility serving as the Executive Director of the DuPage County Health Department. Our work, however, is not about one person. We have an amazing team of nearly 600 employees who work at the Health Department every day. And joining me today are several members of the DuPage Health County, DuPage County Health Department Leadership Team. First, I'd like to welcome new members to the board and then move into our pre-presentation. So next slide, please, Chris. In a typical year with newly-elected county board members, we would be providing you with an overview of the Health Department, a formalized overview of the Health Department, either in the month of December or January. But forgive us because we're going to be a little bit busy for the remainder of the month of December and January. So we'll provide just a snapshot of the Health Department for you, going to a quick timeline of our COVID response to date, talking about the essential elements, and landing and providing most of our comments around the upcoming vaccine distribution. So a little bit about the Health Department. There are two ways for health departments to be established in the state of Illinois. One is by referendum of the voters, and the other is by resolution of county board. The DuPage County Health Department was established by referendum of the voters in a nearly two-to-one vote in 1944. And we officially began our public health work in 1945. Currently, we have a budget of $51 million that is balanced. And I think it is very important to know that as we were established by referendum, one of the key elements of that process is that we have a completely independent board. So we have recently and for many, many years enjoyed very strong relationships and worked very closely with the county board and the county board chairman. And we very much appreciate that. However, our work is overseen by a Board of Health that consists of two representatives from the county board and then nine other individuals who are appointed to that board. For those of you who may not be aware, we have locations, public health centers, not only on the county campus, which is our central office, as well as the Curzwa Community Center, but we have standing buildings that we own in Addison-Lombard and Westmont, as well as rented leased property in West Chicago. Our services are divided up, actually, in six different categories. Five of those are considered, in my mind, to be clinical services, although the clinical services may be widely different. But we have our behavioral health services, which includes a 24/7 crisis line and 12 respite outpatient beds. We have our small but growing communicable disease and epidemiology service unit, our client access, community health resources, and public health services. Again, we have just under 600 FTEs to provide that service. But now let's move into our COVID-19 public health response. We actually, when we outline our response, we're actually closer to the end than we were even a month ago. So I'd like to just very briefly walk through when Phase 1 began. On January 23 of 2020, we actually established Incident Command at the DuPage County Public Health Department because we knew, we saw that a major milestone was coming. We in no way had any way of knowing how it would unfold and continued to be unfolding. But we established regular and routine communication with leadership of the county and began also tapping into our regional, state, and national public health. At that time, we were focused on disease surveillance, on contact tracing. Our first case was actually identified in March, Friday, March 13. However, we had many, many other individuals who were DuPage County residents who were contacts of cases prior to that. We also realized that public education was going to be critical, that the public had a lot of questions. And we established an emergency call center. And we also focused our effort because at that time, you'll remember that long-term care facilities, our first case was actually in a long-term care facility, and that was the focus. As we went through, then the later spring, summer, and fall, you can see how our phases continued to expand. So it's not that anything has let go. We haven't let go of anything. We've just continued to build the resources. So as we are right now, we are, we have most recently added our vaccination planning efforts, our public education around those efforts, our Heart Coalition, which is actually an acronym that I have yet to memorize, but it's around health equity and making sure that individuals who may have disparate health outcomes and have more challenges in achieving optimal health outcomes are focused upon and particularly with COVID, are given adequate access to not only the vaccine but the life-saving treatments that are available. So let's talk about disease monitoring a little bit. Disease monitoring or surveillance is a core function. So if we could go ahead and jump a couple slides, yep. Where are we at as of 8:00 a.m. on December 6, 2020? We see the number of lab-confirmed cases in the U.S., the state of Illinois, as well as DuPage County. So we have continued to increase in the number, both in the number of lab-confirmed cases over the last two days, as well, unfortunately, as lab-confirmed deaths. Next slide shows you that we have been and are continuing to be extraordinarily focused on providing updated information in as close to real time as possible since March, when we launched our dashboard. And the dashboard is on the left-hand side of this slide. We update that on a daily basis. However, additionally, we have expanded the analysis of DuPage County activity and it's actually under the dashboard. If you continue to scroll down from the dashboard, you see other analysis of the cases, both from a race, ethnicity standpoint, from a underlying medical conditions, and from those individuals who have recovered outside of a hospital and those individuals who have required hospitalization. So that's been a major focus of our efforts. The dashboard is very rich with information. And if you have questions about how best to use or how to optimize the use of the dashboard, we'd be happy to walk you through that. We also realized that we are not alone in needing to address the challenges. So we have been very intentional in working with other local leaders. We have provided at least weekly, if not twice a week, calls and access to information through our partnership with the Regional Office of Education and Dr. Darlene Russetti to provide us connections with school superintendents who are incredibly taxed and stretched during this pandemic in order to meet the needs of their constituencies. We also have had weekly calls with mayors and village managers to make sure that our messages and our priorities are amplified instead of kind of being at odds with one another. Early on and continuing, police and fire EMS have had an important role. And particularly, the risk of the prehospitalization role of EMS has been a focus. And so we have had routine calls with those folks, as well as our hospitals and healthcare partners. Finally, I was happy to see the Chief Judge come because I think if there's a community within a community, it does exist within the courthouse located on the campus of DuPage County, the county campus there in Wheaton. And they certainly, and we certainly have specific questions and concerns about people who are making their way through the judicial system and how to manage those, both safely for the individuals who are coming into the building, as well as the staff and the employees. We also have stood up several other, besides the Heart Coalition. We've stood up a business response team. Their charge is to provide Their charge is to provide guidance to local businesses regarding things like the, the proper cleaning and disinfection, risk reduction strategies, safe operations, and then more recently, really focusing on education and understanding of the Restore Illinois tiers 1, 2, and 3. We have taken our existing staff and, and amazing staff and have asked them to do not only their, their role in which they were hired to perform, but also to, in many cases, to double, double up and spend part of their time at least providing this kind of support to our businesses. As of the start of January, we have had contact with nearly 1,600 businesses and over 63,000, almost 64,000 contacts regarding businesses. We also have established an education response team. And again, that, that team is primarily clinical and they provide guidance to all schools and daycares. Again, since, or as of December 1st, we have, we have had contacts, 375 contacts with schools and daycares and nearly 5,000 calls or emails have been addressed and assisted. Finally, the Heart Coalition, which I mentioned, is, is a coalition that was developed in partnership with both the Health Coalition and the Federation on, on Human Services Reform. We're focused on, on reducing the disproportionate impact of COVID-19 in communities and groups most affected by the pandemic. We have the same data, we have data on the disproportionate impact that mirrors what we're seeing across the country in that our Latinx population, as well as our Black, African-American population have had a much more dramatic and acute, significant then, then experience with COVID. So, we have done that so far around PPE distribution, making sure that everyone has access to masks and other PPE. We've done that through testing and now we will continue to do that through our vaccination efforts. When it comes to public education, I think we have been one of the four, front runners in providing information, although none of us really understood the scope or the impact of this pandemic in the early days. We knew that it would not be possible without, without a fully, fully robust education campaign to reach out and address all the, all the questions that our residents had. We also knew, although we had no idea what was going to be happening, that there would be a lot of, a lot of information. And so, we wanted to make sure that our residents had credible, research-based, and updated information. And so, we established our COVID webpage. If you haven't had a chance to see that, I would encourage you to join the near, nearly 2 million page views that we have had since then, since the, since the launch of this website. We also have developed multimedia advertising campaigns, worked, we worked, have worked and continue to assure that residents receive key messages through us. If they're not finding it on the website, we want to make sure that we utilize the most appropriate and effective media challenges available. And the next slide provides you with just a snapshot of some of the campaigns, of the elements of the campaigns that we have been engaged in. Our community-based testing sites have also been one of our most public-facing efforts. Our, our DuPage County Complex site was established in strong partnership and alignment with the county, as well as with our partners at OSUM, Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. We opened on June 16th. As of the 1st of this month, we have conducted almost 48,000 or over 48,000 tests. It is open on a Monday through Friday basis. However, prior to Thanksgiving and, and even leading up to Thanksgiving, we realized that we were exceeding the capacity of 600 tests per day in very short order. We would open at 7:00 and by 8:30 or 9:00 on a daily basis. For several weeks, we were, we were outstripping our capacity. So, we also worked to open another testing site, which is located on eastern, northeastern side part of DuPage County. They are open Sunday through Friday and we felt like it was important to get those later opportunities available to our residents as well. But not only is the test availability key, but the turnaround for those testing sites is important. Our lab partner has returned to a quick response time of between 24 to 48 hours, which allows us to isolate individuals early on who test positive promptly. When we see about who has utilized the testing site at the, at the county complex, you'll see that although Wheaton and some of the surrounding communities have had a large presence, that there have been significant, there has been significant representation from across the county. We continue to work with the Department of Public Health, the Illinois Department of Public Health, to offer additional mobile sites that are available to residents and upcoming in, on the 18th of December, there will be another site located in West Chicago. But now we come to the time that we've all been kind of waiting for, and that's around vaccine distribution. So, the rest of my comments will be to provide you with really an understanding of what we know. I would caution, caution the comments that I'm about to make about vaccine distribution with the, with the caveat that vaccine distribution, kind of like dealing with the mitigation of a novel virus all along, will be a, will be much more of a, a process than it is a straight line. But we do know, and we are very excited to say that we, our goal all along has been to vaccinate and to provide a vac, safe and effective vaccine to our public so that we can get the other side of this. So, our goals within this vaccination are outlined here. The objectives also inform the strategies and tactics that we will be implementing. We know that on December 1st, the Academy, and Chris helped me, the Academy.
Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices.
Thank you. Approved the recommendation by a majority vote that when, when a COVID-19 vaccine is authorized by the FDA and recommended by ASEP, that vaccines should begin in the initial phase of the Vaccination Program 1A. And this recommendation then was adopted by the CDC Director, Dr. Redfield, and, and most recently by the IDPH, Illinois Department of Public Health Director. So, what does that mean? We know that there are two, we will be receiving two vaccines initially, we and other, other, all across the country will be receiving two vaccines. One is, the first one will be the Pfizer vaccine and the second will be the Moderna vaccine. Each of these has very high effectiveness rates for the two-dose regime. The Pfizer vaccine is offered two doses in a 21-day interval, so that means you get one dose and you wait 21 days, days to the next dose. The Moderna is a 28-day interval. The Pfizer vaccine requires ultra-cold storage, so it, it presents significant additional challenges, but the Moderna vaccine has a standard freezer storage approach to it. It is important to note, and as we go to the next slide, that although all of this is in queue, we really are waiting for the FDA review, which happens on Thursday, before this vaccine can, can be distributed. And we very much want to wait for that. That's part of our commitment in our contract with the American public to provide a safe and effective vaccine. So, the FDA will meet on December 10th to review and provide recommendations on the Pfizer vaccine. They will again meet on the 17th to review and, and hopefully approve the Moderna vaccine, which means the Pfizer distribution will begin the week of the 13th and the Moderna distribution effort will begin the week of the 20th. Now, we did hear this morning that the FDA Advisory Committee released a briefing that will be used to consider the FDA's decision on, on Thursday for the emergency use authorization, which provided us with, with some additional information. But again, until that decision is final, these are simply plans. I referenced the, the ASAP's 1A phase and, and we are having these prioritization groups, which is reflective of, of many of the differences that are striking when we compare this with our more, more recent experience with the H1N1 vaccine effort. I'd just like to highlight a couple of those and then we'll move into who's in the Phase 1A prioritization group. One is the vaccine supply. We have extremely limited supplies of the vaccine so far. The other issue with the vaccine supply is that it has been trialed and, and hopefully will be approved only for adults. The third difference in the vaccine supply compared to, from COVID to H1N1 is the fact that we have had, we will be engaging and embarking on a very rapid implementation following the trials. Second big distinction is the level of disease in the community. When we talk about vaccinating a million people or nearly a million people, like we are in the, the county of DuPage, we know that we're, we're not going to be able to bring together large groups of individuals. The, the, the spread of disease in the community is much too high. Not only will we not be able to bring together those individuals, but we won't be able to bring together the family groups or the household groups because of the vaccine approvals for only adults. So, we're, we're tweaking our plans in order to make sure that we have the availability to provide drive-up vaccination in an outside environment. The final major diversion of, of the awesome responsibility to provide COVID vaccination is that it requires a medical model. Much of our emergency response planning to date, particularly was, particularly those plans in which we looked to touch the entire population was based on the use of antibiotics or prophylaxis versus a vaccine. So, in essence, we wouldn't have to see or touch each individual. If you remember, we talked about people coming in and gathering and, and leaving with enough antibiotics, either Cipro, Cipro or another antibiotic, and then they take home a bag and they'd be able to, to provide it to their, all of their family or household members. And that is not the case. So, we have many, many challenges as we look in this, in this extraordinary and unprecedented effort to work through our vaccine distribution. But when we look at the phases, we see that in 1A, it involves focusing on healthcare personnel only and long-term care facility residents. Once we get that phase completed, then we will be looking at Phase 1B, which are essential workers. Examples of essential workers are those, really in those critical infrastructure positions. So, it's first responders, it's utilities, it's corrections officers, transportation, as well as the education sector. Once we work our way through those, then, and, and we have the vaccine supply available to us, then we will be looking at Phase 1C, which are adults with high-risk medical conditions and adults over the age of 65. Next slide. So, when we break down the number of people who are in this 1A category, the numbers that you see on the top of this slide reflect national numbers. We have yet to receive the number of individuals from a statewide perspective, so we also don't have them available for, for a countywide perspective. However, we have done some calculating based upon the job classifications that actually Choose DuPage has available to us. And based on that information, we estimate that there will be 58, around 58,000 individuals who need to be vaccinated in this 1A category. Now, we, we also estimate that it will take probably six to eight weeks, based on the amount of vaccine that we have available to work our way through the, these two integral and, and highest level of priority groups. We will be focusing our community efforts on the healthcare personnel and making sure to get the vaccine distributed to the list of, list of individuals who are represented on that left, on the left-hand side of this slide. And, and through the government, the federal government's efforts, we will be relying on the Pharmacy Partnership Program to provide individuals in the long-term care facility bucket through a contract with CVS and Walgreens. Included in that bucket and of most concern for DuPage County is the fact that our DuPage Care Center is matched with CVS and so they will be receiving vaccine through that and, and administration through that program. So, what do we know about what's coming for Illinois and particularly for DuPage County? What we know is that the top 50 counties with the highest death rates per capita will receive the initial allocation of vaccine, meaning that we will receive, and DuPage does fall in this category unfortunately, we will be receiving the first shipment of vaccine the week of the 13th of December. What we understand at this point is that these vaccines will be shipped directly from Pfizer, the manufacturer, to a regional hospital coordinating center. For our region, that is the Loyola University Medical Center located in Maywood. IDPH will be determining the portion of the initial allocation and ongoing allocations for DuPage County. And the Health Department will be responsible for the coordination of the transport of the vaccines to our local health systems. Now, based on the information that we have received so far on what the amount of vaccine that will be available is on the next slide. We anticipate that the state of Illinois will be receiving over 109,000 doses. Once they take off the doses that are allocated. once they take off the doses that are allocated specifically for the city of Chicago. We will be receiving in EMS Region 8, a total of 16,575 doses. It's important to note that although DuPage County makes up the majority of Region 8 EMS region, there are, there is suburban locations as well as locations in Will County that account for Region 8 as well. So we anticipate hearing in the next couple of days what the specific allocation for DuPage County is. However, we know it won't be any more than 16,575. So what are we doing in anticipation of this news? We are finalizing the initial allocation plans and the point of dispensing locations. We know that although we're focused on this initial phase of the highest level of priority residents, we know that once vaccine, or we expect that once vaccine distribution begins, we will be receiving weekly doses. We're currently working to collect the numbers of individuals in each of the priority groups. And we are collecting a lot of information and responding it in a way that requires flexibility that is Gumby-like to incorporate these changes in our mass vaccination plans. So stay tuned on those. However, we also have committed to making sure that our residents have access to a safe vaccine. And one of the tools that we will be using and posting prominently on our webpage around vaccination efforts is the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System. This is not a new system. It has been established and managed by CDC and the Food and Drug Administration to deal with all vaccines that are provided. There's, really serves as an early warning system to detect possible safety issues. And so we want to make sure that our residents, as they go through this process, know where to report if they have any adverse reactions or side effects that are concerning. So that will certainly be an important component of our work as well. Finally, we have established and launched the COVID-19 vaccination pages on our website to make sure that individuals have this place to land. Again, I think there will be probably lots of confusing information, misleading, some of it simply confusing, some of it unfortunately misleading or untruthful information about the vaccine. We want to make sure that we provide our residents with a full-service page of information that they can rely upon to be sound and science-based. So with that, I don't know if there's questions?
Okay, thank you, Karen. Thank you for that very thorough overview and dive into the distribution. I see a question here from Greg Schworzy and Sheila Rutledge and Member Desart. So why don't we start with Mr. Schworzy?
Thank you, and thank you, Karen. With the initial shipment of around 16,000 or 17,000 doses, would that mean we are only treating, say, half of that since each person needs two doses? Or are we going to have an assumption that we'll continue to get weekly doses delivered in time?
Our planning assumptions and the version that we have received from the state of Illinois is to fully allocate those 16,000 doses to 16,000 individuals and with the expectation that their second round will be provided within the next vaccine distribution waves.
Thank you.
Member Rutledge?
Thank you, Chairman Cronin. And Karen, thank you and your staff. I hope that these vaccines coming through are the light at the end of the tunnel, that you guys will finally get some time off and be able to rest and catch up with this. I have a couple of concerns that I want to talk about. I'm not overly, but in the last month, I had COVID in my house. I got tested. It took seven days for my result to come back. And it took a month for the contact tracers to reach out to my son. So what I'm hearing, but what the actual things are, are a little different. Can you explain the difference there?
Absolutely, absolutely. We were keeping up with contact tracing when we had, what we had, when we thought we had high levels of transmission. So we were getting 200 or 300 cases per day. You know that based on, or perhaps you remember, based upon some of my prior presentations, we're able to close about 400 or 500 cases a day with our contact tracing team. But when we get 1,500 cases a day, or 800 cases a day, or even 600 cases a day, it really creates this exponential backlog of cases. That was all, so that's with the case investigation piece of it. So we had to prioritize, right? And so we prioritized individuals with very acute symptoms or in special or significantly risky kind of professions. Regarding the testing backlog, yeah, we saw not only were, and these are, these are very tightly linked, right? We saw lots and lots of people wanting to get tested. We had high rates of testing being submitted and all of our labs fell behind as well. The lab that we use at our two testing sites that we support are caught up. They use the Thanksgiving weekend to continue to run their lab around the clock for those, for that holiday weekend. And so now we have caught back up. And as I indicated, are back at the 24 to 48-hour timeframe.
Thank you, Karen.
Further questions, Member Desart?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions too. First of all, Karen, this has been an awful year, and you and your staff have always picked up the phone, whether it's nine o'clock on a Sunday morning or late on a Sunday, you guys have always picked up the phone. So thank you so much for the work that you've done. Two questions. One is, in Category 1A, you said there are 58,000 people in DuPage County who would get that first initial vaccination. And if we're only getting about 16,000, a little over 16,000 vaccines, how will we subcategorize or sub-prioritize that category?
That's a great question. And for that, we had a call with our healthcare and hospital partners. And Chris and Dr. Chug, I'm going to ask you to address that.
Sure. Hi, this is Chris Hoff from the Health Department. Yes, so it's a great question. The sub-prioritization will really look at those providers that are first providing direct care to patients who are COVID-positive or likely to have COVID. What that looks like is likely emergency room staff, ICU providers, COVID care unit staff and staff working with patients in that environment, and really focused on hospital and inpatient care first and then expanding out as vaccine becomes more available. Dr. Chug, anything you'd like to add?
No, that covered it. You mentioned in addition to the, you know, most inpatient and ICU-oriented individuals, the vaccinators themselves, EMS, the pre-hospital folks, and then in general, inpatient, outpatient, paid, unpaid, direct, indirect patient care individuals. Really ultimately, those are the, they all fall under the umbrella of healthcare personnel. But yes, the sub-prioritizations are based on what Chris outlined. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Now, I had the opportunity to speak with a COVID doctor from outside this summer, and she was talking about as these vaccines were becoming, were becoming developed, this might be a problem. And here it is, the problem with the Pfizer vaccine. And this has been a concern of mine too. I know those Sub-Zero refrigerators to keep this vaccine at, you know, minus 94 degrees. I know those, that refrigeration system is super expensive. So once we get these vaccines, the 1,600-plus vaccines, will the CVS, Walgreens, hospitals, long-term health centers, pharmacies, even the DuPage County Health Department have these Sub-Zero refrigeration systems to keep these vaccines safe at their minus 94 temperatures? And also, I understand each vaccine vial has five vaccines per vial in each, in each vial. So how are we going to keep these vaccines, the Pfizer ones anyway, safe for the public at that temperature? Thank you. That's my last question. I'll listen.
Sure, sure. So we at the Health Department knew that we would have a pivotal role in distributing vaccine and had heard, as you indicated over the summer, about the need for these specialized, this specialized equipment. So we have actually ordered two freezers, ultra-cold freezers. Now, unfortunately, we weren't the only ones who heard that and the manufacturing process is what it is. So we have yet to receive those. In the meantime, we have developed partnerships with other organizations across the community who have access. So we will have adequate access to store these vaccines in these ultra-cold temperatures. However, the Pfizer vaccine has a five-day window by which it remains viable after being held at that very cold temperature. So it still needs to be, it still needs to be monitored. It's not like you can just leave it out on the counter or something like that. But it doesn't require that ultra-cold temperature for those five days. So we're working again very closely so that not one single dose of vaccine goes to waste, particularly because of something that we missed in the, in the journey to move it from the manufacturer into people's arms.
Karen, thank you and your staff for everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a tremendous staff.
Further questions, Member Ozog? Followed by Member LaPlante.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, can't thank you guys enough for all that you've been doing. It's phenomenal. My question is about distribution. You said something around 18,000 in the first shipment that you're going to receive. How is that going to work? Let's say that's week one. How is that going to work going forward? And is it the same, it's the same formula for the second dose of vaccination, I assume? Same dosage, same, same actual vaccine? But how, what do you anticipate? So you said 18,000, that's pot number one.
16, 16, yep.
Where does, when do the other pots arrive? And what's the process?
So, so again, this is part of the, part of the evolution. We have estimates from the Illinois Department of Public Health, and then we also have the subsequent caution. So we have estimates of weekly amounts of Pfizer and Moderna. But we also have the caution, both from IDPH as well as from CDC, to not, not count on getting that much vaccine until it's actually received in our hands. So again, I think it's the, it's the, we don't want to overpromise what's coming. I think the most important thing is that whatever the amount, we're planning for weekly distributions. And so our initial doses are so limited that we're looking at an equal distribution across the healthcare systems for these, for these extraordinarily high-risk healthcare professionals. From that, we will have to adjust. And this is where I would very much appreciate your understanding and your helping to amplify the message that we will be as transparent with where these doses are going as we possibly can. But every single week, we will have to be making adjustments and to how we're approaching this process. Again, not, not outside of the norm of the guidelines provided to us. We will be using the established guidelines as outlined by ASAP, CDC, and IDPH. But it may be that not all the doses show up, that there's an extenuating circumstance that we need to be reallocating doses more greatly to the long-term care facilities or things like that. So any questions that you have so that you can confidently respond to residents to say that, yeah, we know that this is a change. We knew that this was going to be fluid, but we have every confidence in the Health Department. Please reach out to us so that we can provide you with that level of reassurance.
And Karen, thank you. You've always been so responsive to any questions I've had and I'm sure for the other board members as well. Thank you, thank you.
Absolutely.
Member Lynn LaPlante?
Thank you, Chairman. Karen, thank you so much for this optimistic news. We all really needed to hear something like this. I do have another question about the timing of the distribution, and I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding it correctly. You mentioned a six-to-eight-week period in terms of distributing to our high-risk constituents. Do you mean six to eight weeks for simply the 1A? Or six to eight weeks to make it through 1A through 1C?
I am providing the six to eight weeks, and it all depends on the amount of vaccine that we receive. So at the outside, it will be six to eight weeks. If we were to get the lower levels of our vaccine, of the vaccine distribution, it would take us six to eight weeks. If we get more than that, we can certainly get through it much more quickly. But the sense and the, the message, the key message in that is it won't be the week after Christmas that if you're in the non-risk, you know, population, it won't be the week after Christmas that you can expect to get vaccinated. It will be a couple of months. And even for our higher-risk residents, it may be a couple of months. But we are working to make sure that as soon as we get vaccine, we're able to get it into the, into our residents.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Further questions? Further questions? Member Chaplin?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. And Karen, yes, thank you so much for everything you've done in your department's, and I can imagine the level of stress over there. So really appreciate it. My question is, do we have a marketing campaign planned for encouraging people to get the vaccination? Because, you know, if we don't, you know, people are hesitant or afraid, they're not going to get vaccinated and it's, you know, the, it won't really make much difference. So because we know that there's a lot of fear of this vaccination out there. So I was just wondering if you guys have a plan of marketing that vaccination?
Yes, yes, we absolutely do. And it is predicated on the assurance that this is a safe and effective vaccine, that there have been no shortcuts, because I think that's, that's kind of the base level of concern. And then we get to more refined levels. But absolutely, we have, we have a massive campaign effort designed. We are, we are launching next week, you know, kind of the basic elements of the campaign. And then we will really need to wait to see what is creating, because we want this to be an effective campaign, what is creating the hesitancy? What is creating the caution? That's also a key factor in our work with our Heart Coalition, because we have, we know we have element, sections of our community and elements within those minority communities that have developed a distrust of vaccination or healthcare in general. And so we are already working with those groups too to identify, you know, we have the, oh my goodness, I'm forgetting the name of, of the groups that are partnering with us in this Heart Coalition. But they're members of the communities themselves and the churches. And so we're working to develop key messages and key ambassadors through that program.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Member Jim Zay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Karen, thank you. You know, a couple of weeks ago, we had a lot of public comment about schools. And just want to switch off the vaccine here for a second. You know, we've been through this for nine months. There's a lot of talk out there. We have seen the numbers. You know, we've seen now studies in the last two weeks that are saying that schools are not are saying that schools are not super spreaders, that, you know, even though we see areas like California, New York, where they're having second wave, they're putting more restrictions in, they continue to keep their schools open. And I'm just wondering if there is any thought of the Health Department changing their, their metrics that they put out for the schools? Because, I mean, as we talk about a vaccine, the vaccine hasn't even been tested on anybody 18 and under. And what the governor had said, that they'll be the last ones to get vaccinated. So if they're that low of risk, and we're seeing studies that they're not super spreaders at schools, and we continue to see more reports of the mental health, the stress that's putting on our children, I mean, are we going to take another look at this and try to get our schools reopened? Because I've talked to superintendents, I know we say that it's up to them, but they always turn it back and say, well, if we go against it, our attorneys have said, if you go against the Health Department and the state, we'll get sued. And that, you know, I, I think there needs to be some dialogue here and try to move forward and see if it's safe. And the studies are saying it's safe, that we need to look at, you know, after the first of the year, or maybe February 1st, getting our schools reopened for our kids.
So Jim, uh, Members A, do not, um, at all, uh, quibble with anything that you said about the need for students to get back in schools. I would like to just, um, outline, however, that it's not only, um, young people that are in schools, it is the adults who are caring for those individuals. And we certainly have had, um, a number of, of cases of teachers, faculty, and staff who have, um, contracted COVID. Now, even that aside, however, um, we still want kids to get back in school, and we want to reduce the risk as much as possible. And absolutely agree that there will not be a risk-free or a safe environment, um, for some time, what in terms of COVID. Um, however, what we are seeing across the community, the level of spread that we have right now across the community is something that we have not seen since the start of this pandemic. And so I would encourage us, if, if we believe, which I think we do, um, that, that kids need to be in schools, um, the studies that have shown that, that schools can be reopened, um, have had to prioritize schools over other sectors of the economy. So we have schools open, but we might not have businesses open that are currently open. And that helps to reduce the number of, um, cases occurring in the community so that it is safer for schools to be open. Um, it, it is extraordinarily challenging. We know this is people's livelihoods when we close restaurants or, 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 uh, bars, or bowling alleys, or tanning salons, or fill in the blank. Um, but, but that's the case that, that most studies that have shown that schools can be open, it's because, one, their, their case rate in the community was much lower than where ours is currently. And, or two, in order to make that happen, um, the communities have made the really difficult prioritization of school above all else. Uh, I certainly hope that we can get to that point, um, because I, I absolutely agree, the, the impact on the kids, um, not, not only their educational achievement, but as you pointed out, their mental health, the family stability, all of those factors, um, are being weighed.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions? Further questions? Mr. Shorzy.
I'm going to circle back around to the two doses because that, that is a little concerning to me with such limited supply, certainly initially. I know there's, uh, a 21-day wait or a 28-day wait, depending on which, uh, distributor you use or manufacturer you use. If there is a shortage, or we, we don't get the supply in time for that second dose, is there a concern? I mean, how, how tight is that 28-day window or that 21-day window?
Um, I think that, I, I think that this vaccine is so new that we don't quite understand, um, some of the elements, um, that you're asking. And, um, it's also important to note, and I can't remember if I mentioned this, that in this presentation, that if your first dose is with Pfizer, your second dose also must be with that Pfizer vaccine, um, as well as the Moderna. So you can't switch out, say, if we run out of, um, Pfizer to switch to Moderna. Um, so I don't have firsthand knowledge on, on how the Pfizer supply chain looks right now. Um, what we can rely upon and, and what we have relied upon is the information that we're getting from our state and primarily federal partners. And they seem to indicate, um, again, a, a level of confidence, albeit a little bit, um, weighted on the number of vaccines. Um, they're certainly encouraging, um, full utilization of this first wave of, of vaccine supply.
Okay. Thank you, Members Shorzy. Anyone else, um, with a question? Anyone else? Okay. Karen, thank you very much. Really, really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Well, that, uh, that kind of, that, that does conclude our presentations, uh, this morning. I, I, I do have a couple of remarks I wanted to share with you before we go to public comment. First and foremost, I want to welcome our new board members to their first meeting following last night's inauguration ceremony. And it was a very nice ceremony. It was very efficient, and it was so nice to meet the new members and their families. Uh, thank you to all of those who were able to attend. Uh, as I said last night, I look forward to working with all of you. And, um, and to our new members, of course, um, welcome. And our returning members, I, I ask that you extend yourselves, as you always have, to help and provide guidance to your new colleagues, uh, who are learning our processes and procedures. And so, uh, welcome. Uh, I've had some great conversations with some, uh, new board members, and I look forward to working with all of you, as I say, to provide leadership and support. That's, uh, how I see my role, providing leadership and support to this board. Uh, we live in interesting and challenging times, no doubt. 2020 has been a year like, like none other. Uh, in this coming year, our challenge will be to work with our Health Department, regional, state, and national partners to get, uh, our COVID-19 vaccine distributed effectively and equitably as quickly as possible. Obviously, after listening to Karen this morning, we can see the magnitude of that responsibility. Uh, I also want to know, let you know that I've been working collaboratively with my counterparts from the Northeast region, President Preckwinkle, my counterparts in Will and Lake Counties. Um, we, uh, understand the responsibility that we have in public health at the county level with this phase of the pandemic, the response to the pandemic and the distribution of the vaccine. It's an awesome, uh, undertaking. I, um, I'm also enormously proud of the work that we've done, um, with, uh, distributing DuPage's federal cares allocation, providing assistance to our municipalities, nonprofits, food pantries, first responders, fire and park districts during the pandemic. I really hope that we can continue to do so as we anticipate that more federal aid, uh, will be made available. Uh, on that note, I will remind you that we plan to have a special call meeting on December 22nd, uh, to consider, uh, approved applications from restaurants and bars that, uh, submitted to Choose DuPage as part of the Small Business Relief Program. So we'll, we will send you, uh, more notification, but please be sure to mark your calendars. Um, as this is our last regular board meeting of the 2020 calendar, uh, I'll take this opportunity on behalf of the County Board to express our holiday greetings and gratitude, uh, to all the DuPage County employees. Uh, we are disheartened that we cannot provide our traditional holiday breakfast, um, for the employees. I know how much all of you enjoy serving our wonderful employees, but because of the, the COVID-19, we're just not able to do that this year. But that doesn't mean we're not grateful, uh, for the, the great work that all of the employees do here. We have a real community feeling and spirit here on DuPage County. It was something that struck me when I first came to this board. I was really impressed with the way that the DuPage County employees and the community of people that are working for the county, really i- is, is, is it really a, a nice, um, there's a nice synergy. There's a, there's a nice, uh, uh, sense of, of family, if you will. Um, so our special thanks to all those who are going to be working during the holidays, at the care center, of course, round the clock. They've done just awesome work there, just remarkable, uh, results that they've been able to achieve in a most challenging environment. The jail, uh, my goodness, the jail. I mean, you think about other jail populations across the state, and you look at what our sheriff has been able to do. It's really quite remarkable. Public Works, transportation crews, all of you, vital part of our success here as a county. Um, lastly, if you're looking for a hopeful note to end, uh, the year on, and I know that, uh, given this, uh, 2020, uh, we're all looking for something hopeful, I, I think, check out our now famous Lola the Wonder Dog, uh, that story. Uh, Lola, as many of you may know, or some of you may know, wandered away from a home where her owners were visiting in Elk Grove Village three years ago. Uh, last week, a Glendale Heights couple brought her in to the DuPage Animal Services, and because she was microchipped, the staff could track down her owners in Kalamazoo, Michigan. Over the weekend, uh, Lola and grateful owners Deborah and Steve Major were reunited in front of the shelter here in Wheaton. It's a remarkable story, and, um, it's really kind of heartwarming. Thank you so much to our Animal Services, uh, folks, our, our Chairman Brian Krajewski, Dr. Barbara Hannock, our Animal Services and Communications Crew for getting the word out about this, uh, wonderful story. This is a Christmas miracle, if there ever was one. So a holiday miracle. So all of you, uh, thank you. And, uh, with that, we move on to the next order of business entitled, uh, Public Comment. This is where we, uh, we welcome folks from the public to come in, share their thoughts and concerns. Um, and uh, we're here to serve, uh, the public. And so, uh, I do offer this sort of, uh, instruction, if I may please, according to our County Board rules, members of the public, uh, are afforded time to address the board. Individual remarks shall not exceed three minutes in length, nor shall the total time provided for all remarks. Uh, if we had multiple folks here, it couldn't exceed 30 minutes. So our first speaker this morning is, uh, Suzie Ryer from Willowbrook, Clarton Hills, who's here. It looks like she's here with her family and has been patiently waiting. So please, uh, proceed.
Not my family, but a bunch of homeschooler kids that I'm homeschooling.
Okay. I'm sorry.
And I have one, one little guy in the green, but thank you for, uh...
Look at that little guy.
Yeah, we thought we'd take a field trip for how to stay local in politics. Uh, my name is Suzie Ryer, and I reside at 50865th Street. Um, I attest and affirm that the following statements are true, accurate, and within my personal knowledge. I learned about, I'm, actually, I'm a, I'm a teach, um, a teacher with a master's in education, and this year I'm teaching at home. And, um, I have experience working with students with ADHD, autism, ADD. I've learned a lot about the rollout of 4G, 5G wireless telecommunications or WTFs. When driving on I-55 with a friend two summers ago, that friend was a retired comed, um, he worked for comed for 25 years, and he pointed out the cell tower and explained how 5G would be deployed. That got me researching and wondering how safe are these cell towers or devices we use. Um, as a mother of a seven-year-old and homeschooling two wonderful kids, um, I've learned that children and fetuses are most vulnerable in the effects of microwave radiation, non-ionizing radiation, um, radiation exposure due to their small, fast-growing bodies. A five-year-old's brain absorbs over double that of an adult. Um, there is also, I've got, I can back that up. Um, I did, I did considerable research into microwave radiation, um, reading many peer-reviewed studies. I learned this radiation is antibiotic and for, and/or foreign to life because of its pulse modulation. This pulse modulation, radiation creates turmoil in our bodies. If you are healthy, you may not notice immediate effects, but the radiation is harming us, ne- nevertheless, causing many possible symptoms: neurological interference, sleep disorders, fatigue, melatonin suppression, ADD, ADHD, cognitive impairments, anxiety, ringing in the ears, heart problems, causing cell division, mutations, increased cancer, reproduce sperm quality and quantity, infertility, and birth defects. Constant exposure will slowly hurt your defenses and immunity. Children, pregnant women, persons with chronic illnesses, and the elderly are much more vulnerable. Tens of thousands of scientific studies show that the microwave radiation or non-ionizing radiation from wireless infrastructures is harmful. Even wireless companies provide warnings in their packaging. The American Academy of Pediatric has, has been asking the FCC since 2013 to update its guidelines. They've never had to update their guidelines. Because of, um, because of this three decades, the FCC has refused to consider, consider vulnerable populations such as children. In 1996, EPA was about to release stricter exposure regulations, but was defunded. International scientists have been highly critical of the U.S. and our lack of commitment to researching the effects of this radiation. The FCC guidelines is based on, in scientific fraud. Yeah, they use a 220-pound dummy with water, and that is how they, they've done their testing, which is not most of the public. The fact that the FCC has been labeled a captured agency by the Harvard Center of Ethics speaks volumes. Tom Wheeler, former FCC Chair, worked in, for the CTIA, the biggest telecom lobbying group. Current FCC Chair Ajit Pai has a Verizon, he, he, he was a Verizon attorney. It's amazing what happens when you follow the, connect the dots, before gaining the position at FCC. However, note that even the top attorney, attorneys in FCC who specialize in the National Environmental Policy Act, NIPA, now say that every wireless facility must include a NIPA review in the applications. I'm, that's where I'm very stuck right now and with this NIPA review. I do not consent to allowing my son to be exposed to the microwave radiation in increased intensities at his school, where all these towers are going on as we were quarantined, where the current applications for a wireless facility there to be permitted. This must be stopped immediately. Telecom companies are not insured. You cannot sue them. Same with the vaccines. For instance, Swiss, uh, Swisser refuses to insure 5G. Small franchises, applicants at the village do not have the assets to pay for damage that occur. And their large companies pass along liability to the franchises. We do not need more WTFs in our unincorporated area of Clarton Hills, Willowbrook, Burridge, Hinsdale. Um, we've covered, um, we've covered, and in any case would have far better service with fiber optics. I have expressed no concern or any other non-substantive, or non-relevant matter, but solely matters of fact and law. I accept your oath of office. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. Yeah, yeah. We're familiar with this issue. We were immersed in it a couple of years ago.
Yeah, Senate Bill 14...
Legislature has passed a law that we lobbied very hard against.
I, I, I know.
Well, didn't get a lot of attention back then.
So they, it was Senate Bill 1451, and then they said it's safe, but we're going to put a law in taking your power away. Is that, is that, okay?
Yeah, yeah. We fought, uh...
I know. I, 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 I'm very aware. I've been doing this for a year. And...
Yeah.
My, my biggest problem is every time you try to, I FOIA'd, I've, I've done everything. It's like everyone points the, you know, as these towers go up, so...
Well, thank you for sharing your thoughts, and we share your concern, and we'll work as best as we can. Uh, the next person that's seeking, uh, to offer some public comment is Karen Rug from Itasca.
I hate coming here, but COVID kept me away. The last time I was here was Martin Luther King meeting, January 14th. The last time I was here was Martin Luther King meeting, January 14, 2020, not quite a year ago. Things never change, never change. Think you've gotten a copy of this? The leadership in Itasca, the back page, the second little star there. Payment of street and sidewalk improvements and repair. That's funny, the nursing home in Itasca has never had a storm sewer. They don't have sidewalks. All the nurses, visitors, grandmas, kids have to get out in mud, uncut grass. And then, my husband found this on the internet, an address from Mayor Prine, and he says, "Itasca can only do so much on its own, the success of our stormwater efforts hinge on DuPage County's ability to manage stormwater flow in Salt Creek and Springbrook." He doesn't say anything about the forest preserve. So, he goes on for two decades, I've been coming here for five years, two decades, leaders have been advocating with DuPage County for better stormwater management. We have offered various solutions, which the county and its consultants deemed to be unviable. We have pleaded for them to reassess how they operate the Wooddale-Itasca reservoir. I'll let you finish the rest of this, but I thought it was funny, because I'm always told that you can't do anything here in DuPage. Here on the second page, it says, "If you're interested in helping us advocate for Itasca with DuPage, and you know how local flooding has impacted you," here I am, "you can also contact your officials, Jim Zay, Donald Pachelski, Ashley Selman, Sam Tor Tony." Now, over a year and a half ago, I was getting things printed up in the office, and I saw Sam Tor and Tony, and I said, "Hey, do you think you could stop by and see what's going on in the nursing home?" And he briskly walked by, he said, "I've been there, I saw it." That was it. Then I saw Donald Pachelski come out, and I said, "Hey, do you think you could stop by and see what's happening at the nursing home?" This is not about the nursing home, I just used that because that's the building there. This is about Itasca and DuPage County. The nursing home is a victim, just like I'm a victim. So, Donald Pachelski gave me a ray of hope. He said, "Oh, yeah, yeah, I've been thinking, yeah, maybe I can get over there." Walked by. Then, Mr. Eckhart was exiting, and I said, "Do you think you could come by?" And he was so fast, he reminded me like a little wired soldier. I don't think you even said anything, but it was like you were looking to escape. So, that was the end of that. One time, it was raining really badly, and I thought, you know, I'm gonna try that Pachelski, he only lives a mile or two away from the house. The rain was coming down, you can see it in the gutter going this way, forest preserve coming this way. Very pleasant girl answered the phone, said, "Gee, I don't think he's here right now, but he'll be back shortly." And I said, "Well, you haven't give me a call?" And I never got a call. So, I waited an hour, called again. "Do you think he could come over? I want him to see the water." She says, "I don't know, I don't know what he's doing. He'll give you a call." Meanwhile, the rain's coming down, you can see it live with your own two eyes, what's happening. No, no phone calls. Probably, then later in the afternoon, I called again, and I think they blocked my phone. So, he never did a thing. So, I had some good luck, and I'll tell you about it. I decided to do some volunteer work for the Democratic Party. And a woman in Itasca called me up, and I stuffed envelopes, and somehow, a lady in Bensonville, who is like a bigger captain, she called me up, and she said, "I know you did work for Linda, could you help me do some envelopes?" I said, "Sure," so I went to her house, and she lives over where the flooding occurred with Jason Knowles covered, and what was that, June 14th? Jason Knowles, DuPage County, Sarah Hahn, you can see it on YouTube, the woman that was being flooded out, and she states on camera that DuPage County wouldn't help her. Well, in the end, DuPage County did help her, but she had to get a newspaper to come and help her to get some attention. So, anyways, this lady in Bensonville said, "No, I don't know those people, but I have flooding problems too," and I told them about how, "You let a building go up next to me, and they're constantly flooding me out, you don't seem to care about any. Any Illinois state statutes, rules, laws, nothing, just destroy your property, just like you're destroying the nursing home." So, good thing happened. She says, "Listen, I know Diane Pappas." She said, "I'll have her give you a call." So, she did. And last Thursday, she came out 11 o'clock, and I showed her. It's funny, because that printed card on the front talks about caring about sidewalks and streets, and there's no storm sewer there, the water just bubbles up to the top, and I showed her there were no sidewalks, I showed her there's no storm sewers, I showed her all the garbage. Now, when you go to park districts, people are sweeping up the kids' gum wrappers, candy wrappers, pop bottles, like you have garbage cans. You have a commercial business there, there's no garbage cans, and then people complain because there's garbage. The nursing home is clean, this is, who knows who's throwing that garbage? The city doesn't clean it up, nobody cleans it up. The broken branches from the trees from the forest preserve, which hang over cars, nobody does anything about it, they just hang there. I told her about the cul-de-sac. This summer, I was in there taking my photos, as I always do, and a mother with two little boys on training wheels was coming out of the park, the bicycle path. A lot of people go back there with their kids, roller blade, roller skate, skateboards. There was no place for her to exit. She had to wait for the cars to turn around, it's a turnaround. There's no sidewalk, it's just garbage, beer bottles. I showed her a plant with a rubber bucket still laying there, God knows how long it's been there. So, there's no sidewalks anywhere, not even for little children, for the safety of your citizens. You guys don't care, I've been coming here for four years. Last May, and then I showed her, I took her up, I showed her how there's a big berm. First, there's the bicycle path, then it goes up again, then there's a roadway. When it rains, it just kind of pours down right into the nursing home, right into me, right into other residents on George Street. And I come here, I come here. You talked about your heartwarming story. I got heartbreaking stories, constantly. You just sit here, I go home, nothing's ever done. So, then I showed Pappas how the roadway is a constant source, it blocks the water from going back naturally to the glacier basin, and it just floods in on Itasca residents. So, I went there in May, in the middle of the night, we had a good storm, was the worst water at the nursing home I've ever seen. It bubbled up over the sidewalk, over the curb, over the grass, and then it came down the sidewalk to the wheelchair ramp, and the wheelchair ramp is corrugated, so people have traction pushing the wheelchair up and down. It was bubbling, bubbling, bubbling down the wheelchair ramp, into the gutter, flowing to where all the cars were sitting up to the hubcaps. You don't park like that downstairs, Mr. Cronin. I see your first space, where you're in a heated garage...
Ms. Rugge, so, we've really extended a courtesy, we've extended a courtesy to you, you've spoken for 10 minutes now, and we've been very patiently listening, and it goes beyond our rules, so, but we want to give...
When are you gonna do something over there?
Well, I'm gonna ask you to bring your remarks to a close, please.
When are you gonna do something? How long is this, how many years is this gonna go on? I thought, I see you with J.B. Pritzker on TV, talking about how much you care for healthcare workers, and you make them walk with boots to get to their cars.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, thank you for sharing your thoughts with us. That concludes, that concludes our public comment. Maybe at some point, Jim, you could inform the new board members the extent to which our county has tried to address this issue.
So need.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so, we move on to the next order of business entitled, "Consent." Consent, there's a motion and a second. Mr. Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll? Zay?
Aye.
Chaplin?
Aye.
Chavez? Covert?
Aye.
Desart?
Aye.
DiCiani?
Aye.
Eckoff?
Aye.
Garcia?
Aye.
Hart?
Aye.
Krajewski?
Aye.
LaPlante?
Aye.
Ozog?
Aye.
Pachelski? Rennahan?
Aye.
Rutledge? We have member Ronid seeking recognition?
I do, yes. On the issue that'll come up on the agenda later, there should have been several public comments submitted. Connor, were there no public comments?
Oh, okay, I've just been alerted that there are electronic public comments, so, I don't know, Connor was napping over here. So, forgive me, so, I'll tell you what, with leave of the body, we'll go back to the electronic public comments. Mr. McCarthy, with leave of the body, seeing no objection, we'll go back, please, Mr. McCarthy, proceed. Thank you, Sheila, for letting us know. First comments from Anthony Anello? I'm gonna have to get Connor a cup of coffee.
Apologies, I got distracted by the back and forth. The first comments from Anthony Anello, it's regarding approval of land purchase in Wheaton for Willow Creek Wheaton Church. It states, "Dear all, please consider approving the plans for land purchase of Willow Creek Church in Wheaton on Winfield Road. As a member of the Willow congregation for almost 30 years, I wish the board members could have witnessed the countless contributions of Willow Creek Church and its satellites have made to our communities. Love for our neighbors in need is much more than word or thought. The fulfillment of love requires physical action, and that's exactly what the members of Willow Wheaton do. Whether it is putting together food, truckloads of food, clothing, and supplies for distribution, or giving backpacks to students in need, or sending Christmas gifts to the less fortunate, or ministering to the needs of our neighborhoods with other forms of support, these acts of support will grow as the church is allowed to grow physically. Acquiring the land on Winfield Road is the first step in this process. Will you please give it your sincere and thoughtful consideration? Sincerely, Anthony and Janelle Anello." Next comments from Naveen Michael, it's regarding support our DuPage and DuPage Foundation's request to provide COVID relief funding for their arts organizations in DuPage County. Dear Chairman Cronin and County, and DuPage County Board members, as the president of Young Naperville Singers, I am writing to ask that you please support Arts DuPage and DuPage Foundation's request to provide COVID relief funding for the arts organizations in DuPage County. These dollars would help worthy arts organizations that impact the community in myriad ways. We have worked tirelessly to reimagine Young Naperville Singers in order to accommodate the restrictions set forth by the pandemic. All of our efforts were worth it, we know that our choirs need to stay connected to community peers and singing, it's such, it is such a vital emotional outlet. We hear countless stories from our families that are dealing with fear, anxiety, and struggles during this very difficult time. They've relayed to us that the safe haven of coming together and singing is helping with the emotional health of their children. Several parents have confidentially shared with us that their children struggling with feelings of isolation from the outside world are seeing Young Naperville Singers as a beacon of hope. When the students come together and sing, it seems to heal the soul and provide optimism. Now more than ever, the connection to music and the arts is vital for our students, and we are grateful that we are able to stay connected to our students through music. Therapeutically, we are able to improve the social, emotional well-being of these young people and help them during a very difficult time. Our staff and volunteers continue to work overtime with no extra compensation of staff to help ensure mental health of our students. We are so grateful for our community partners that understand that the arts are lifeline to many right now, especially children and teens. With the additional financial support we will be able to receive through additional grant funds, we can continue on our path of providing available service for our students, their families, and the community at large. Your approval of the funding request will enable Arts DuPage and the DuPage Foundation to aid arts organizations in DuPage County that are in great need, and help us recover from the devastation of the pandemic. Signed, Naveen Michael." Next comment is from David Rice, regarding support for more emergency funding for the arts industry in DuPage County. Dear members of the DuPage County Board, I am writing you to urge your support for emergency funding for the arts industry in DuPage County. The economic effects of the shutdown of in-person arts events has devastated the arts community nationwide, and no more or more significantly than in DuPage County. Most arts organizations have lost 100% of their earned income from ticket sales and admission fees, and that income represents more than 50% of the total income for most organizations. I know that you board members have a great deal of respect for the arts and understand the social significance of having a strong arts presence in DuPage County, but the arts are also a major part of the economy as well. According to the U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis, $25.9 billion is generated by the arts and cultural sector here in Illinois. This represents 3.3 of the total GDP in our state. The arts are responsible for over $14 billion in payroll compensation every year here in Illinois. As you can imagine, the long-term financial implications for DuPage County and the entire state of Illinois if the arts industry collapses. I thank the board for everything you have done so far, your support is greatly appreciated. However, the work is not done, the arts are not yet safe. I encourage, I urge you to vote to help continue the work that is being done to make sure that the arts stay vibrant here in DuPage County. Sincerely, David Rice." Next comment is from John McKinnon, it's regarding support a possible relief grant to our fellow organizations in the county. Dear Chairman Cronin and members of the board, as member of the arts community in DuPage, I am writing you to ask you to support a possible grant relief program for our fellow organizations in the county. Despite the challenges this year, artists and art organizations responded in a number of creative ways which have helped bring people together while socially distant during a difficult time, whether on virtual programs, outdoor events like painted murals, groups of people singing from their balconies, and more. Some venues were able to reopen for several months and saw less than 20% of their usual foot traffic, but others, like large-scale theaters, will remain closed until the vaccine reaches a majority of the population. The arts are vital to the health and happiness of our community. We must protect arts organizations now so that after a vaccine is available and society begins to reopen, they can resume their role in helping rebuild the local economy and greatly enhance our way of living. The arts drive tourism, the arts retain local dollars, and we know the arts and cultural sector is a $4 billion industry with over 110,000 full-time employee jobs in the state of Illinois. Many arts organizations in the state have closed their doors permanently. With so much at stake, we must now ask, we must now act to ensure the vitality of the arts in our future. I am sincerely appreciative of your support and consideration, John McKinnon." Next comments from Diana Martinez, it's regarding funding to support nonprofit arts and entertainment organizations in our community. It states, "Dear DuPage County Board members, in DuPage County, 2,272 arts-related businesses employ over 14,000 people. There is nothing more vital to the entertainment industry than talented people, and we are a jobs-creating industry. The majority of any organization's budget in the performing arts is always the talent fees and salaries. Since March of 2019, our organizations have been prohibited from opening and compounding the situation. A recent study shows that fundraising in performing arts has seen a 90% decline due to our inability to opening. The MAC has experienced an 85% decline in donations, 90% decline in revenue. Many organizations have tried to pivot to online and virtual experiences, but the reality of trying to maintain a staff is exceptionally challenging when revenue is drastically declined. The arts community has been patient throughout the last nine months, but each month becomes more challenging to maintain. The arts and entertainment industry are vital to our community, which helps us support our restaurants, bars, tourism, and the local economy. If we want to pivot back in 2021, we need to maintain the employees in entertainment arts organizations in DuPage County. I urge you to please consider making funds available to the Arts DuPage and DuPage Foundation to distribute to the nonprofit arts and entertainment organizations in our community. I realize that you have many challenges facing you and are very grateful for your service and consideration. I remain hopeful that the vaccine will allow us to reopen by the summer. We all want to be prepared to drive the economy and bounce back as quickly as possible to generate activity and consumer confidence. I hope you will consider our request. Very best wishes to you all in the new year. Very sincerely, yours, Diana Martinez." Next comment is from Steve Morley, it's regarding support a relief grant for the arts community in DuPage County. Dear Chairman Cronin and members of the DuPage County Boards, arts and cultural events play a major role in what makes Elmhurst a unique and enjoyable place to be. Our community continues to face hardships, including our ability to attend the events and cultural experiences our city typically offers. Many organizations continue to offer virtual experiences during this period, however, the value of accessing this program in person is immeasurable. I believe that during these times, it has become more apparent that our community events, arts, and cultural experience contribute to our well-being and sense of freedom. I am happy to see that many of our local organizations are finding innovative ways to offer programming safely, despite the challenges they are facing." despite the challenges they are facing. It is imperative that we support these organizations as they work through the challenges of this pandemic. I believe art in Elmhurst will continue to grow and enrich the lives of our community members. Art can be vital to health and happiness. For these reasons and more, I ask that you support a grant relief program for the arts community in DuPage County. Please provide CARESAC funding to ensure the vitality of arts in DuPage County. Thank you for your consideration. Feel free to contact me with additional information." Uh, the next, the next comments from David McGowan, it's regarding COVID-nineteen relief grant for the arts. Dear Chairman Cronin and members of the DuPage County Board, COVID-nineteen has placed unprecedented strain on the arts community this year. The financial impact of the pandemic-related closures and restrictions in the creative sector has resulted in major income losses and rising unemployment rates. In addition, the arts are facing a potential ninety-two percent decline in donor support as patrons experience financial hardships or pivot their charitable giving to health and human services entities. Art leaders are committed during, uh, remaining relevant through creative programming. However, these efforts do not produce the proceeds necessary to cover the damages incurred. With the promise of a vaccine on the horizon, DuPage Foundation and its Arts DuPage Initiative believe that grant funding will enable arts organizations to navigate the duration of the shutdown. Arts-generated economic activity will create and sustain an ecosystem that includes restaurants, hospitality, tourism, and transportation. These industries, when working in harmony, will help rebuild our region and attract arts lovers from near and far. It's for these reasons I ask that you support our request to allocate COVID relief grant funds for the arts, DuPage, for the arts in DuPage County and ensure that the viability of our organizations that play a critical role in furthering individual and community growth of our county. Sincerely, David McGowan." Next comment, Beth Marchetti, it's regarding our COVID-nineteen relief grant for the arts. Dear Chairman Cronin, the true intersection between quality of life for residents and a thriving economy, uh, visitor economy is local culture. Cultural institutions help define a community while providing expansive reach through their own respective societies. Given their significance, the DCVB staff and board of directors supports Arts DuPage and the DuPage Foundation in their request for CARES funding through the DuPage County Board. According to the U.S. Travel Association and DK Schifflit, S-H-I-F-F-L-E-T, the gold standard in tourism economic impact data, guests in DuPage County hotels spend sixteen percent of every dollar on arts and entertainment. This equates to over forty million dollars a year, not to mention the significant dollars spent by residents bull during the economy. Use of the requested funds will assist dozens of grantees with funding for PPE operations and personnel costs, all due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. This funding could be the lifeline for many institutions, allowing them to survive until mitigations are eased, vaccines become available, and we can safely welcome guests by collectively working with local municipalities, chambers of commerce, and the DCVB on a countywide recovery plan. Across the globe, every destination is going to compete for visitors. The playing field has been leveled. The recovery program will require every tool and every DuPage County organization to collaborate while working in their specialty. This is imperative that we have remaining, it is imperative that we have remaining businesses in a robust assortment of theater, arts, museums, and historical attractions and events to lure day visitors and overnight guests, uh, just waiting to experience a DuPage adventure. Until then, our stages remain dark. We hope this won't be much longer, and we can get back to the business of doing business. With regards, Beth Marchetti." Last comments from Philip Buchanan, it's regarding new members in the DuPage County Foundation support. Congratulations, congratulations to our new members, uh, Amy Chavez, Lynn LaPlante, Paula Deacon-Garcia, and Greg Schworzy. Also, congratulations to countywide elected officers Kathleen Adams, uh, Kathleen, sorry, Candace Adams, Kathleen Carrier, and Bill White. A big thanks to the board for supporting additional COVID-nineteen resources to the DuPage Foundation Resolution HFIR zero zero two six dash two six. We need to continue to support our arts organizations in this difficult time. That concludes all the electronic public comments I received.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Member Rutledge, for, uh, alerting us. Um, I've been asked by a couple county board members if we would consider, if I would consider, just if we could take a quick break, maybe five minutes, uh, use the facilities, get a cup of coffee, uh, we, uh, we can, I think, pretty, move pretty expeditiously through the rest of our, uh, agenda today. So with that, uh, if there's no objection, we'll just take a quick break and, and we'll come back in about, let's try to stick to about five minutes, no more than ten minutes, please. Thank you. Probably should do a roll call. We've reconvened for the record here. We took a brief recess. Um, Mr. Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll? Chaplain.
Here.
Chavez.
Here.
Covert.
Here.
Desart.
Here.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Kuduski.
Here.
LaPlante.
Here.
Ozog.
Here.
Pachalski. Rennahan.
Here.
Rutledge.
Here.
Selman, I mean, Schworzy. Selman.
Here.
Tornatori. And Zay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, with leave of the body, I'm gonna go back and start over with the, uh, order of business entitled consent. Is there a motion? So moved and seconded. Seconded over there, Mr. Schworzy. Um, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Zay. Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski. Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Uh, Schworzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, on to the order of county board, Member Jim Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to yield to Florida Member Rutledge for nomination of the county board vice chairman.
Member Rutledge.
Thank you, Jim, uh, and thank you, Chairman. Uh, welcome to the new board members. It's not always like this, um, but I would like to start by taking a minute to acknowledge our reputation as a well-run county and to thank all of the county board members who've come before us, and especially the staff, whose work has made sure that we continue to have that stellar reputation. Today, we move forward with a board that looks different than our county has seen in many years. For the first time since the FDR presidency, it will be governed with a Democratic majority. As Democrats, we're all focused on working together on behalf of our constituents who have voted for change. When looking for a vice chair, we all were sure a steady, focused, measured board member would help us to work together to make the changes that voters have told us they want. We look towards someone with experience with both large entities and nonprofits, someone with a good grasp of our county government and the numbers that make up our budget, and someone who works well with all members of our board. With that in mind, I am happy to nominate Ashley Selman for this important role.
Second, Chaplain.
Okay, there's been a motion by Member Rutledge, seconded by Member Chaplain. Any discussion? Uh, seeing none, hearing none. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
Selman.
I'm sorry, is it proper to abstain here, or is it okay to vote?
Yes, oh, yes.
Vote, okay, aye, thank you.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski. And Rennahan.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations. Looking forward to working with you, uh, Member Selman. Uh, on to the next item of business, uh, Member Jim Zay.
Move on approval of the twenty twenty DuPage County Board Committee assignments.
Second, Chaplain.
Okay, there's been a motion, so moved by Member Zay, seconded by Member Chaplain. Any discussion? Seeing none, oh, Mr. Member Kuduski.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Chairman, and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm fine with these committee appointments. Uh, the thing is, we have sixteen committees, uh, not counting our ad hoc, and finances, everybody on it, so that's eighteen, and JPS has got two, so that's nineteen. Um, I know in my district, I got eight of these committees. Um, Board Member Rennahan got six, and Hart, Board Member Hart got five. Um, I guess I don't mind taking on eight, but, you know, usually I think we've tried to put these things together where we kind of split the work between the district members, so I'm not sure, you know, I wasn't, didn't talk to anybody when these were put together, but, um, I'm fine with eight, but, um, I'll support these. Um, I've been on all different committees since I've been there, but it just seemed like I got an extraordinary amount. But again, I'm not, I'm gonna support it.
Okay, further discussion. I saw Mr. Eckoff seeking recognition.
Note, I don't know if it makes any difference, but there's a position for chairman pro tem, and it's my understanding that pursuant to our rules, you can't elect a chairman pro tem prospectively to future meetings, that a chairman pro tem is elected when the two, or it would be in this case, the chairman, the vice chairman are absent from the meeting, and then elected from the remaining people that are present at the meeting. So, we can vote on it the way it is, but I don't think it has any effect.
Okay. Um, anyone else seeking recognition? Anyone else, uh, for purposes of discussion? Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski. Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy. Selman.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, that concludes your business of the county board. Okay, thank you, Member Jim Zay. On to the order of finance, finance. Member Jim Zay.
Uh, I'm gonna try to combine this as much as I can, so I'm gonna move to can, combine and approve items A, B, and C. These are all acceptance and appropriations.
And a motion and a second to combine A, B, and C, all those, no, we gotta do a roll call. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski. Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy. Selman.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
Aye.
Okay, the items are combined. Please proceed, Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on FIR eleven twenty-one, Acceptance Appropriations of Victims Crime Act, the amount of nine thousand dollars. FIR twelve twenty-one, Acceptance Appropriation, Illinois Department of Human Services Emergency Solutions Grant, amount of two hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. And FIR thirteen twenty-one, Acceptance of Additional Appropriations, or I'm sorry, Additional Funding for IDHS, Supportive Housing Program Grant, amount of fifteen thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars.
Okay, uh, there's been a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski, Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy. Selman.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
Aye.
Okay, the items are adopted. Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on FIR twenty-three twenty-one, Annual General Fund Financial Commitments in the Support of Various Recipients in the General Fund for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-One.
And a motion and...
Second, Chaplain.
Seconded by Member Chaplain. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski. LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski, Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy. Selman.
Aye.
And Tornatori. Okay, Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on FIR sixteen twenty-one, Place Names on Payroll.
Second, Chaplain.
Motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski, Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy. Selman.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
Aye.
Okay, the resolution is adopted. Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on FIR seventeen twenty-one, Ratification Decision in the Interest Arbitration Between County of DuPage, County DuPage Sheriff, and Metropolitan Alliance, uh, Police, DuPage County Sheriff's Police, Chapter One Twenty-Six.
Second, Desart.
Okay, it's been a motion and a number of seconds. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplain.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
Diciani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Kuduski. Kuduski. LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachalski, Rennahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy. Selman.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to combine and approve items G and H, then J through O, with I being have voted down in finance.
Okay, so G through O with the exception of I. It's been a motion to combine these items. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Ekoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy. Selman.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on FIR 1921, Resolution Agreement with Candor Health Education. FIR 2621, Resolution Grant Agreement with DuPage Foundation. FIR 2021, Approval of Payment to the Village of Villa Park. FIR 2121, Approval Agreement with the Village of Glendale Heights. FIR 2421, Approval of Payment to the Village of Woodridge. FIR 2221, Approval of Payment to Itasca Community Library. FIR 2521, Approval of Payments for Small Business Independent Contractors for Small Business Relief Program through Choose DuPage. And FIR 2721, Recommendation Approval of Payment to DuPage County Health Department for COVID Eligible Expenses.
Okay, thank you for that explanation of those items. We combined them. Now we're voting on the underlying substance of the resolution. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Ekoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy. Selman.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on FIR 2821, Budget Transfer.
But a motion and a second by Mr. Shorzy. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Ekoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy. Selman.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on FIR 821, Approval Contract As Due to Mesero Insurance, Provide Liability Insurance for DuPage Care Center.
Second, Garcia.
Motion and a second from Member Garcia. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Ekoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski. LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy. Selman.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Zay. A fine report. Oh, I'm sorry.
By Itasca?
Yeah, it was... Yeah. No, that's good. Thank you, Mr. Zay, on the order of finance. We move on to the order of animal services. Member Brian Krajewski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just on a committee update, you touched earlier in the meeting regarding Lola being reunited with their family on Saturday. I had the pleasure of being out there on Saturday at Animal Services. And out at Saturday's reunion, we had the Daily Herald, the Chicago Tribune, ABC Channel 7, and Channel 5, NBC, and WBDM Radio were all there doing interviews on the story. And then CBS 2 and Fox 32 picked up the footage later that evening. But since then, this news story has gone pretty much across the world. The Guardian picked it up, the Washington Post, the USA Today, the AP, and the Wall Street Journal. And then there's been articles in Canada, Brazil, Ireland, New Zealand, Beijing, China, Scotland, and India, for the ones that staff has been tracking. So this story has made five continents. I haven't seen anything in Africa or Antarctica yet. But the staff at DuPage County Animal Services did a phenomenal job. And they keep mentioning DuPage and Animal Services. And I know yesterday Joan was contacted by Good Morning America, who is reaching out to inquire about the story. And that's the second time in a year. If you guys remember, Big Cat Lebowski made it to Good Morning America, too, with a million shares. They're really doing a good job over there. Laura from Animal Services will be reaching out to the new board members if you want to set up a tour to see the facility. I think Member Shorzy has already been there and taken a tour. So she'll be reaching out to you. With that, I have one item, a move on 2021-2, Recommendation for the Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to H2I Group for our purchase of a Biological Safety Cabinet for Animal Services. This is a COVID-related item.
Second, Desart.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert. Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Ekoff. Garcia.
Aye.
And Hart.
Aye.
Okay, the resolution is adopted. Thank you very much, Member Krajewski. Onto the order of ETSB. Member Grant Ekoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval, subject to parental parent committee approval on Wednesday, ETS 15-21, Second Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement between DuCom and the County Board.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ekoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski. LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
And DeCiani.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, our most esteemed Member Grant Ekoff, pending parent committee approval. Moving on to the next order of business, Health and Human Services, Member Sam Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under Committee Update, I do want to, this is the last report I'll be making, want to thank the committee for which I've served, former Chairman DeCiani, Vice Chairman Renahan, for all their hard work, Janelle Chadwick from the Care Center, Mary Keating from Community Services, and all members of the staff. I've had the good fortune to be on this committee for eight years, six as Vice Chairman, and a brief tenure as Chair. And I will tell you that the people who are on this committee and the people who serve the residents of DuPage County at both the Care Center and Community Services do so, making this county the best that we can possibly be. And I congratulate and wish well to the new Chair, Member Renahan, and look forward to the continued good work on this committee. I would move to approve HHSR 14-21, A Resolution Recommending Approval of a Third Agreement Modification to United Servile Policy Segment of Greater Chicago.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Ekoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski. LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy. Selman.
Aye.
Which passes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd move to combine items B, C, D, E, F, and G. These are all approvals for contract purchases to either the Care Center or Community Services.
And a motion and a second to combine these items. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Forgive me to interrupt the roll call. Member Rutledge was seeking recognition.
I did. I'm just going to have a question on one of those items I'm not opposed to combining.
Okay, so we'll recognize you right after we take a roll call on the combining. Mr. Clerk, please proceed.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Ekoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy. And Selman.
Aye.
Okay, the items are combined. Member Rutledge.
Thank you, Chairman. I just have a question about Item B, Advocacy Services to Victims of Domestic Violence, for $85,000. And to me, that just seems like not a very lot of money for a problem that is exacerbated by COVID. So my question is, are there more agencies like this? And are we just, pardon me, approving this one? Or does this encompass the total work for domestic violence?
Do you want to try to establish that?
I will defer to Mary Keating if she's on the line. I'm sure she will have a better answer than I could conjure up at this point.
There's Mary Keating, please.
Yeah, I'm on. Thank you. Thank you, Member Rutledge. This particular contract is strictly for family shelters. Family Shelter is the agency that's designated as the domestic violence agency that follows up on police calls. They also are present within the courthouse. And that's what these funds support. There are other agencies that do counseling services. Family Shelter is by far the largest provider in the county. Some of those other agencies may receive funding from the Human Services Grant Fund, or may have received funds from coronavirus relief. But I would have to look a little bit more specifically at any other agencies that we may be funding. We do, as you know, with the various grants that we manage, we do fund probably 60 or 65 different nonprofit agencies.
Thank you, Mary. I appreciate your comments.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Member Rutledge. Back to Member Tornatori to explain the underlying items that we have voted to combine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd move to approve HHSP 001-21, A Recommendation for a Contract Purchase Order to Family Shelter Services, in an amount not to exceed $85,000. I'd move to approve HHSP 003-21, A Recommendation for Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Leading Age Illinois for Membership Dues, in the amount of $31,181.79. Move to approve HHSP 004-21, A Recommendation for Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Northwestern Medical Medicine Regional Medical Group for the Services of Angela Mailey, M.D., in an amount not to exceed $36,000 for Professional Services. Move to approve HHSP 0005-21, Recommendation for Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Clifton Larson Allen for Medicare and Medicaid Cost Reports, for the DuPage Care Center, for a contract not to exceed $31,300. Move to approve HHSP 0006-21, A Recommendation for Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Washburn Machinery, Inc., for Laundry Equipment Repair Services, per contract not total not to exceed $35,000. And move to approve a Change Order, HHSP 02008-20, an Amendment to Resolution, HHSP 0200-20, issued to Technical Communities, Inc., for the Purchase of a Low-Touch Socially Distanced Cueing System, to add an additional 30 user licenses, to increase the contract $4,361 in one set, resulting in an amended contract total amount not to exceed $80,504 in one set.
Okay, thank you. There's been a motion and a second on these underlying items for their approval. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Ekoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pacowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Shorzy. And Selman.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd move to combine items H, I, and J. These are authorizations for overnight travel.
It's been a motion and a second to combine items H, I, and J. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Ekoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy.
Aye.
And Selman.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have voted to combine these three items. Now, Mr. Tornatori, do you want to explain them?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd move to approve an authorization for overnight travel for a weatherization program assessor to assess building fundamentals training in Champaign, Illinois from January 11, 2021 to January 15, 2021. Move to approve an authorization for overnight travel for a weatherization program assessor to attain a diagnostic training in Champaign, Illinois from February 1, 2021 through February 5, 2021. And finally, I'd move to approve an authorization for overnight travel for the weatherization program assessor to attend MCI training in Champaign, Illinois from February 15, 2021 through February 19, 2021.
Okay, there's been a motion by Member Tornatori, seconded by Member Zay. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy. And Selman.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Tornatori. Just a little point of information, if I may, for the new members. This voting may seem a little tedious to you, but because of the environment that we're in with remote, this is what's required by law, so just FYI. Moving on to the next order of business, Judicial Public Safety, Member Grant Eckoff.
Move to discharge the committee.
Suck.
JPS committee. Been a motion and a second to discharge committee. We don't do voice votes in this environment, so, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante. LaPlante.
Aye.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chap- Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
And DeCiani.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Eckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of JPS 7-21, a recommendation for the approval for a contract purchase order to Ray O'Hara for new officer and employee uniforms for the Sheriff's Office.
Second, Desart.
Okay, there's been a motion by Member Eckoff, seconded by Member Desart. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Eckoff.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Selman. I'm Schw- Schworzy. Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
And DeCiani.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Eckoff, for fine report. On to the order of Public Works, Member Sam Tornatori.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve PWP 001-21, a recommendation for approval of a contract to Curry Motors for the purchase of a 2021 Ford F-250 four-by-four pickup truck in an amount not to exceed $70,022.
Been a motion by Mr. Tornatori, seconded by Mr. Zay. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy. Selman.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Tornatori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd move to approve PWP 0002-21, a recommendation for approval of a contract to Roche Ford Commercial Truck Center for the purchase of a 2021 Ford F-150 pickup truck in an amount not to exceed $56,256.
Okay, there's been a motion, seconded by Mr. DeCiani. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Tornatori.
Aye.
Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy. And Selman.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Tornatori. On to the order of business entitled Stormwater. Our own stormer, Member Jim Zay, if you can say that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Committee Update, wanted to bring up a shout-out to our staff. The Illinois section of the American Society of Civil Engineers recently awarded DuPage County Stormwater Management's Redmond Reservoir Expansion Project with the 2020 Outstanding Civil Engineering Achievement Award for projects under $10 million. The project was completed in partnership with the Village of Bensonville in District 1. This project was to alleviate flooding throughout much of the village and the surrounding watershed. We expanded the floodwater capacity of the reservoir by more than 7 million gallons. It also incorporated habitat enhancements, water quality features such as shoreline stabilization, native plantings, and an approved walking path for the residents to use. In addition, the $2.75 million project was funded completely by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The only thing that we put into it was the staff time to manage that project. In the end, this project exemplifies great intergovernmental cooperation that will greatly benefit the community after years of hardship due to flooding. Just that we got the award from the American Society of Civil Engineers is just a bonus for this project. I'd like to thank our staff, Sarah Hahn, Jamie Locke, and all of our staff who worked on this. It was a great project, and the Village of Bensonville for working with us. Another great intergovernmental cooperation that's going to benefit the people of Bensonville. So with that, I'm going to move to combine and approve items A through G. These are all acceptance of a permanent drainage easement, $1 amount on each.
I don't think we can combine and approve them. We can combine them first and then approve them, I'm advised by my legal counsel here. I understand. So there's a motion to combine items A through G. There's a second by Mr. Member DeCiani. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy. Selman.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMR 421, acceptance of permanent easement in the amount $1 for Tezook. SMR 321, recommendation of temporary easement to Pfeiffer for $1. SMR 521, acceptance of construction easement to Bailey for $1. SMR 921, acceptance of temporary construction easement, Markman $1. SMR 621, acceptance of temporary construction easement, Hagan $1. SMR 821, recommendation acceptance of construction easement to Zilof $1. And SMR 721, recommendation acceptance of construction easement to Palmera Properties for $1.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zay. There's been an explanation of these items that have been combined. A motion by Mr. Zay, seconded by Mr. DeCiani. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy. Selman.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMR 1021, Stormwater Committee approval of interdepartment memorandum of understanding between Stormwater Management, DuPage Community Development Commission, and Department of Housing and Urban Development for funding of the Umhors Quarry-Sleusgate Installation Project.
Been a motion and a second. Forgive me. Someone seeking recognition? Nope. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Zay.
Aye.
Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. Garcia.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy. Selman.
Aye.
And Tornatori.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Zay. On to the order of Technology, Member Greg Hart.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm in a first move to discharge committee.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? Seconded by Member DeCiani to discharge committee. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart. Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. And Garcia.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Member Hart. On to the order of Transportation.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I gotta move on the item.
Oh, forget it.
That was just a discharge committee.
Oh, I get ahead of myself there. Sorry about that. We-
No worries, no worries. So I'll move on TEP 270A-20, Amendment to Resolution, TEP 270-20 issued to MHC Software.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve this item that's been discharged from committee, seconded by Member Zay. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hart.
Aye.
Krajewski.
Aye.
LaPlante.
Aye.
Ozog.
Aye.
Pachowski, Renahan.
Aye.
Rutledge.
Aye.
Schworzy. Selman.
Aye.
Tornatori. Zay. Chaplin.
Aye.
Chavez.
Aye.
Covert.
Aye.
Desart.
Aye.
DeCiani. Eckoff. And Garcia.
Aye.